Eva Henry.
Here.
Jeff Baker.
Here.
Bill Holland. Elise Jones. David Beckham. Randy Weelock. Sean Wood. Kristy Fanginello. Anthony Graves. Kevin Flynn. Roger Partridge. Laura Thomas. Ron Engels. Libby Zabo. Casey Ty. Bob Pfeifer. Bob Roth.
Here.
Larry Videm. David Spellman. Erin Brockett.
Here.
Ann Justin. Lynn Baca. Tara Radloff. Roger Hudson. George Teal. Jason Bauer. Tammy Mauer. Carrie Penalozza. Catherine Hyder. Laura Christman. Richard Champion. Gail Christie. Rick Teeter. Benjamin Hughesman. Debbie Nasta. Catherine Whitman. Steve Conklin. Linda Olson. Jeff Deacon. Mark Gruber. Daniel Dick.
Present.
Lisa Jones. Laura Brown. Lynette Kelsey. Henry Aragot. Scott Norquist. Storm Glor. Jim Dale.
Here.
Ron Rakowski. George Lance. Mike Hillman. Stephanie Walton. Dana Goodwin. Jacob LeBure. Jerry Bean. Isaac Levy. Karina Elrod. Kyle Schlochter. Jacob Lofgren. Larry Strach. Win Shaw. Joan Peck.
Here.
Ashley Stolzmann. Connie Sullivan. Dan Greenberg. Colleen Whitlow. Joyce Palazuski. Deborah Jerome. Sean Foray. Chris Larson. Jordan Sowers. Julie Mullica. John Dayak. Sally Daigle. Roberta Mooney. Rita Dozal. Jessica Sandgren. Jackie Phillips. Herb Atchison. Shannon Byrd. Bud Starker. Adam Zaran. Deborah Perkins-Smith. Bill Van Meter.
Very good. So I'm going to start out the meeting. This meeting is generally chaired by the Vice Chair. Herb has another meeting that he's coming from and so I'll start out whenever he shows up, I'll turn the meeting over to him and I don't know if that's five minutes or 15 minutes. I do think it would be funny, since we have a very light agenda, if we finish before he gets here. I think that would be hilarious. Make him drive down here for nothing. So, under Attachment A, there's a summary of the November 1st work session minutes. Any changes, additions, corrections? Seeing none, they'll be accepted as they are. Public comment? We do allow public comment up to three minutes per person that would like to address the Board. We do ask that there be no public comment for an item that there's already been a public hearing in the past. Is there anybody that would like to address the body? Seeing nobody?
I just want to check in really quick, actually. It's Jessica Sandgren calling in from Thornton.
Thank you. So we have two items this evening. Neither one of them are action items. Both of them are informational items only. The first one is under Attachment B, discussion of proposed amendments to the Metrovision. Mr. Calvert.
Good afternoon, everyone. Seems low, but I'm also on day six of a cold and I can hear almost nothing in my ear.
We need to adjust volume. That seems better. Okay. The green light would help, too. But my eyes, I can't blame it on my eyes. So the Chair gave me some pressure to sort of hurry up with this item, but I will spend enough time to hopefully get folks oriented to this. My colleagues and I up at the table were sort of just talking about this. I know there's a lot of, we have a fair number of new members, both here and obviously at the regular Board meetings, and we go through a process every year to amend sort of the foundational plans that Dr. Cog works on, both our Metrovision plan as well as our regional transportation plan. And you're seeing some of these amendments in sort of drips and drabs and in sort of different items, so just know that this is part of a bigger picture that you're getting and sort of, and chunks that are ready for your consideration. This is not an action, as the Chair mentioned, but we just were, this is an item that is sort of half heads-up, half check-in. And so I'll spend most of the time on sort of the check-in part and I'll explain why we wanted to bring this item to you here in a second. But as I mentioned, the Board has actually already taken action, preliminary action, on a set of amendments back in December related to our regional transportation plan. You gave staff guidance to take several projects and to model the air quality impacts of those changes to the regional transportation plan. You will see the results of that air quality analysis when you take action on all of these amendments. This is just another set of sort of similar actions that we're going to run by you today. For those that are new, the Board unanimously adopted the Metrovision plan back in January of last year. We really, as a Board, have been working on the same plan through minor revisions and major revisions for the last 20 years or so. And that plan has a longstanding principle that the Board will make minor revisions annually and major updates to the plan as needed. So the last time the Board went through a Metrovision update process, many of you lived through five years of that, that was clearly a major update, but we also, as of October, asked for other minor amendments as well. And I know, just for the new folks, I know you're being asked to think about something that you might not be that familiar with related to Metrovision. I'll just sort of give you a few heads-up. We've got a couple of items coming to the Board in the next couple of months that I think will help you with some context on the Metrovision plan. And then we're in the process of scheduling what we call short courses as well that will be really helpful for new Board members as well. So I know that you're still in your fire hose moment, but there will be some footholds along the way to help you sort of get grounded in the sort of the conversations that we're asking you to have this evening and in similar venues. So, the amendments to the plan typically come in two stripes. There are member-initiated amendments, so we put a call out, people say we would like to change this part of the plan, but we also actually do staff-initiated amendments as well. Like just reflecting on the plan as adopted, there are some things that we might bring forward to the Board to ask you to sort of consider as you're considering other amendments as well. And that's the item I'm going to spend most of the time on this evening, is one amendment that we are suggesting that we would ask you to really kind of collectively think through with us, and I'll talk about that here a little bit more. And then I'm going to give you a heads-up on a few members submitted items that came in as well. And this is all to sort of ground you a little bit in the public review materials that will be put out probably in the next 10 days or so related to plan amendments. So this way you will have seen a lot of the items that we will be asking the public to review and that you will be asked to take action on most likely in the April timeframe. So I'm going to talk about one amendment, again initiated by staff. The memo lays this out, the presentation lays this out as sort of two separate components. It's really the same thing, but we're trying to sort of make the conversation as easy to track as possible. So there is, the plan, for those that were involved, you recall, has 13 overarching plan performance measures in the adopted Metrovision plan. One of them, as stated, reads "Share of the region's housing and employment near high-frequency transit." And so that's actually the item that we're bringing forward to you tonight for some guidance. We have a proposed approach, but we want to kind of get your feedback. And one of the reasons we obviously want to tie in this conversation with you all is for those that participated in the Metrovision deliberations back in, let's call it, 2014, 2015, 2016 timeframe, the Board spent a lot of time talking about performance measures. So we thought this was important enough to bring to you and just sort of get a check-in moment with you on these potential changes. So we are looking to change ultimately kind of two components of that, how we describe the measure itself, and then also due to an error that's explained in the memo, and I'll explain a little bit more in my presentation, we miscalculated the baseline, which then ultimately meant you were having a conversation about an aspirational target that was built on sort of a faulty calculation. We want to clean that up as well. So a little bit about, we are suggesting a change from the term "high-frequency transit" in this measure to "high-capacity transit." Hopefully the memo does a reasonable job of laying this out, but we ultimately are interested in areas that are served in our region by sort of the highest-quality transit service in the region, right? And so you could think of that in two pretty simple components, sort of your fixed guideway, light rail, commuter rail, bus rapid transit, and then you can think of that as sort of your highest-level bus, local bus service. When it comes to the local bus service, we very much think of that as frequency, right? So we look to identify bus stops that are served basically by a bus every 15 minutes throughout an entire day. That is how we determine which bus stops would be considered high-frequency bus stops. And then we think of anything in the sort of light rail, commuter rail, bus rapid transit as sort of higher-capacity transit, but we don't really necessarily, from our methodology standpoint, think of frequency. And so to us, it felt a little misleading to describe the measure as frequency, and we were looking for a term that maybe brings that together, and so we are suggesting the term "high-capacity." So again, highest, the bus stops that have buses, you know, basically 96 buses a day, every 15 minutes throughout our 24-hour day, there's a bus that is stopping there. To give you an idea, that's less than 10% of the bus stops in RTD system. So it's the highest-serving bus stops, think of the one right out here at 13th and Lincoln that has buses on it every, all hours of the day. And I'll explain this sort of, the other piece as well, and it sort of tells you what our intent was and kind of the error that we made when putting baseline information in front of you. We were looking for those bus stops that again, has basically a departure on average every 15 minutes. So that works out to 96 departures over a 24-hour window during a weekday. That was our intent as we were thinking about it. When we actually did the calculation and put the baseline numbers in front of the Board, we got a few tables crisscrossed and ended up actually adding weekday as well as Saturday and Sunday service. So we ended up adding more stops to that sort of geography than we really had intended to. So that's really, we're just simply trying to sort of step back and sort of do it the right way. We are in the process of, one of the things that the Board will hear in the next few months is an update on all observations related to performance measures, and we discovered this in sort of gearing up for that exercise. So this slide, and it's also in your memo, and again, kind of in two disparate pieces, so hopefully this can kind of bring it back together. This shows both what's in the existing adopted plan and as well as what staff is proposing, and we would really like to get your feedback on. So again, the measure as described, named in the plan, is high-frequency transit. We think a fairer term is probably high-capacity transit. This portion of the table shows you the baseline data that was ultimately provided to the Board, again, and through a miscalculation, and the targets that were set by the Board based on those numbers. So staff is now saying, this is actually what the baseline is if we applied our methodology correctly. So in both cases, they drop pretty significantly, and so therefore we want to put that in front of you as well as maybe some suggestions as to how we might reset, you might reset those targets for the year 2040. So, following the methodology as proposed, though miscalculated previously, about 14% of the area's housing stock was located within those high-capacity transit areas back in 2014, and we're suggesting a target of 20% in the year 2040, and you can follow the same logic on the employment side. As noted in the memo, you could think of these, for those that participated in this sort of baseline performance target setting, the Board was really looking for that sweet spot between aspirational targets and achievable targets, right? That was where the magic started to happen, where we were hitting those sorts of sweet spots. We tried to reflect that again, this time around, and kind of the thing that staff is bringing forward to you. You know, one way to think about this, and it's alluded to in the memo, is sort of average annual change that you would have to see to be able to achieve these targets. And these are slightly more ambitious than the previous target in terms of what you would need to see year over year, but based on a couple of years of observation, we're actually well ahead of that trend, so we felt pretty comfortable making them slightly more ambitious than the targets that were previously associated with those baselines. Just to kind of maybe bring it sort of all together as to how ultimately as a region we make progress on that particular performance measure, there are really two ways to get there. You can expand the area covered by high-capacity transit, so increasing your fixed guideway service, more areas served by frequent bus service. Therefore you have more housing and employment that would be captured within the geographies around those areas. And then obviously you can also add housing and jobs to those areas. So there's sort of multiple ways to ultimately show progress on that measure, and in many ways, they should be related to each other. As you see more increased population and employment density, hopefully you would also see an uptick in transit service, and hopefully with an uptick in transit service, there is more appetite for higher-density development in those areas as well. So hopefully they build off each other so that both components are working towards the same sort of degree of progress. I hope I've not confused folks. I don't know how technical that felt, but I'm happy to sort of answer questions. In general, we're here, again, there's no action. We just wanted to sort of share our work as we intended to make public during the public review process and just really check in with the group that spent a lot of time, obviously, working with staff on these measures to feel like if you wanted to give us some guidance as to whether there's a different way to think about this, whether this seemed consistent with the intent when the Board was having previous conversations on performance measures and target. So I'd like to pause and maybe talk about this. I have one other slide, it's more of a housekeeping thing, just to do the full sort of detail related to other amendments you're going to see in the future, but I think this is the primary gist of what I would love to discuss with you all this evening.
So, obviously staff is asking for guidance on what our thoughts and questions might be, so questions or comments? Director Flynn.
Thank you. I'm trying to think this through and understand what the practical implications are down the road, and does the term "high-capacity" encompass "high-frequency"? In other words, if RTD runs a four-car train every half hour, it's the same as running, it's the same capacity as running two-car trains every 15 minutes, but the frequency isn't there and could affect ridership. So are we excluding, what are we excluding by this? Obviously we're excluding a lot if it lowers our numbers that much.
See, I'll attempt to answer, and we can figure out if I've gotten my wires crossed. As I sort of alluded to earlier, you know, we have sort of two components of the transit system that we're trying to spatially identify, sort of fixed guideway, light rail, commuter rail, BRT, and then your highest frequency, the highest level of service, bus service, at a particular stop, right? Because you need that geography. So this, again, this stop out here is a great example. There are at least eight routes that hit that stop, buses in and out of there all the time. So we think of frequency when we think of the bus service at that stop, but anything that you would call your fixed guideway transit, we're just calling that corridor, we're including that regardless of frequency of service because of those types of changes that you mentioned. You could go to four cars less frequently, to two cars more frequently. Rather than getting into how that might change over time, let's just call that "high-capacity" and continue to say that those are trunk-line components of our system that we, as a region, would want to have as much population and employment, obviously in line with local growth aspirations, as possible around that service.
To the extent that it drives that, however, and now recognizing that being from Denver, we have a lot of, we have a lot of high-capacity and high-frequency transit stops, but in my particular district, we don't have very much in southwest Denver, so I'm looking from that lens right now and wondering, will that end up driving jobs and housing options away from my part of town and toward other parts? And I don't know how I feel about that. On RTD's Northwest Rail, for example, the capacity might be there, but the frequency isn't. I think their service plan was to run a train every hour, which isn't very good for building ridership.
And just to respond to the first part of the question, I think this measure attempts to sort of look at the logical places where those things overlap, where population density and highest degree of transit service overlap. Those are the places that this measure is trying to quantify, that we would like to see, you know, more population and employment in areas with high transit service, but we'd recognize the chicken-and-egg part of that conversation, so.
All right, thank you. I have to read a lot more on this before. Director Brockett.
Thank you, Chair. So I missed, are you going to incorporate the description of the meaning of capacity into the description text under, I forget exactly where this goes in the plan, but some of those explanations that you just gave us?
Sure. So, as, when you, if, let's just play this out, that the plan were amended, what you would really see is you would see this measure description change here, and you would see the baseline and the target. We have sort of background information that describes sort of our methodological approach to performing measure analysis and observation. We would also make sure that that background information and sort of supplemental information is reflective of sort of the methodological description that I gave you. So the plan itself does not get into the sort of the nuts-and-bos details about how this is measured, but we do have supporting documents that we shared sort of during the measure process with the Board. We would make sure that those things are reflective as well. In terms of the sort of second part of what we're bringing forward here, the baseline change and the target change, we're not changing methodology. The methodology is the same. We just frankly made a mistake the first time we tried to apply the methodology.
I guess just something to think about, that, because I think capacity is a little less clear than frequency. I mean, it sounds like big buses or big trains, right? Whereas frequency is very clear, it's something that's coming along very often. And so your definition of capacity includes both, but it's not really obvious. So I would think about maybe how to present that with this change.
I would love to tell you how many times Andy and I have talked about which of these terms feels best to us. So we were, we're open. If there's another term, if you all want to live with frequency and the reality that maybe it's not exactly spot-on on the fixed guideway side of things, I don't think we as staff have any major reservations about that. We were just looking for the term that is most reflective of what the methodology is trying to surface.
Say, "capacity-frequency"?
There you go.
Is that a motion? No. Director Shaw, then Director Dozal.
Thank you. I guess I'm struggling with the word as well, and I wonder if a word that might even be more vague could actually work with, you know, subtext of what it represents, "volume," high-volume, whether it be high-volume of stops, high-volume of people, but I, too, am struggling with the word. Thank you.
Director Dozal, before I call on you, was there somebody on the phone that wanted to get in the queue? Okay. Director Dozal.
Yeah, I had same concerns about the word. It didn't fit. When I hear you describe it, it fits better. It's really the availability of transit, high-capacity, so maybe it's the availability. Is it there? Is it available? Can people get on it? You know, is it a train or a bus or whatever? So, I, capacity, too, sounded more, didn't describe it for me as well. And then, but my question was going to be, if we take, or have you taken, RTDs and Fast Tracks plan out to 2040 of where they're going to add high-availability of transit, high-capacity transit, and will that, if they actually build per their plan, will that get us to the 20%?
The hard part is the bus service side of things, is projecting out bus service. I mean, I don't know, have we done, and I don't think we have with this current sort of baseline and target and analysis based on our forecast and our assumptions about the 2040 network, but I'd love to hone a friend if you want to have any.
Yeah, overlay the network or the plan. Overlay the plan and see how many more housing and job numbers you bring into that plan. I'm talking about the RTD plan. Or Fast Tracks plan or whatever. It would be kind of an interesting analysis to me to see how close or how much we move toward the 20%. Are we going to have to, what do we have to do separately from RTD?
Sure. And as I mentioned previously, I mean, one of the, we discovered this error in thinking through our first set of new observations that we were going to bring to you, and that's the type of analysis that we will do along the way with that as well, so that we can bring some context to, you know, we can, you know, let's call it a couple of months from now, we will have a year 14, 15, and 16 observation on this target and the measure, but that's something that we could sort of help tell the story of, assumptions that they exist today, will we get there, or are there other things that we need to be thinking about to make sure that we can hit this target?
Director Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that concerns me in the long-term projection is how do you factor in potential growth, particularly, for example, Aurora, we've been, we've been threatened to cut back our frequency because the ridership has not been built, but we have several thousands of apartments being constructed in the area near the, near the various points, and in terms of planning, how can we incorporate that, those potentials which will clearly have an impact on our ridership and impact the 2040 goals?
Did everyone hear the Commissioner's question? Do you want me to repeat it? Got it? I mean, that's, I mean, so, in some ways, that's why we think that this measure works well together to sort of, in some ways, almost control for that chicken-and-egg part of the conversation, and why we really wanted to treat fixed guideway different than, let's just call it, air quotes, "local bus service," is that the hope is that playing out over the long-term, again, this is a 2040 target, that that investment will ultimately spur the market to deliver more units, those additional units will ultimately spur a higher degree of service such that that frequency will keep up with the development side of things. So that's, on the longer view, the hope is that that begins to kind of normalize out over time.
Other questions or comments? Director Jones.
I'm still noodling over what the right word is. Another option would be "high-quality," and you would of course say, well, what's high-quality? And you'd say, well, if there's fixed guideway capacity or high-frequency buses. I think any word you choose, you're going to need to define it.
Okay. Director Beckham.
Slightly different concern. Since we're changing what will be the outcome data that we're looking at, cutting things basically in a half or two-thirds, how do we handle the change in data so that someone looking at something doesn't look at it as a retrenchment or a fallback or a failure?
Well, I mean, that's an important, why, for us, this rises to the level of a plan amendment, right? So, were this to carry forward in whatever shape, form, or fashion, anytime someone looks at the adopted Metrovision plan, I mean, we have a plan adopted January 18th of 2017, we're going to have a plan as amended, and let's call it April of 2018, it will reflect the correct baseline and target, right? So that idea of sort of a retrenchment really would not be observed. We want to make sure that people, that we are following through on the methodology correctly that we laid out within at least the sort of background guidance documents. So hopefully that will lose any sense of confusion around that and the way that we handle the amendment process.
Anything else?
No one has talked about the number 20% and the number 45%. So am I, is it wrong for me to ask that just to make sure you spend a lot, I understand, the number, the term is the hard part, I get that, is any money, see any issue with those targets? Like I said, we tried to apply a relatively consistent methodology that you all used before, which was achievable, attainable, but ambitious, round numbers, easy to remember. I mean, that was the approach we used, and in general, the year-over-year expected improvement is pretty in line, slightly more ambitious than before, but again, based on three years of observed data, it feels, you know, achievable to us. So I haven't heard anything, so I just didn't want to lose that.
And I think Mr. Calvert captured this very well in the beginning, but, you know, one of the things we talked about at the time when we were discussing this was, you know, whether or not it was easily achievable, achievable with effort, or aspirational. And I think that what we kind of fell on was that it would be achievable and somewhat aspirational, both, so.
You got to, you have to keep your eye on it. It's not, it's not going to, Commissioner Holland pointed out to a really good example as to.
Other questions or comments? Director Odericio.
So, my question is, is I think, I could see the kind of the wordsmithing that's going on with this piece, but the concern I think that we sometimes have, at least on the outer fringes of the metro area, is not just the volume or capacity, which I think is important, but also the footprint of services. Are there any measurements that discuss how, where that footprint of service exists and how to expand that footprint? So when we're talking about this, it's not just talking about the volume of where services currently exist, but how to expand those capacities and the reach to those further areas further out from the center.
And I, that's a very good question, and I mean, I think that's an important sort of underlying component of that measure that I don't want folks to get, to be lost on folks. Ultimately, whatever the right term is, high-capacity, high-frequency, high-volume, we're ultimately talking about a footprint. I mean, this is a spatial exercise that first starts with understanding where are the areas in our region served by the best possible transit service? That is the starting point for the analysis. That gets us a series of buffers and geography that's our starting point. From there, we figure out, well, what percentage of our residents and businesses actually have access to that high-quality service? That really is foundational to the analysis associated with this measure. So, again, the two ways to get there are to expand the footprint and bring more housing and jobs within the footprint by simply expanding it, and then where the service is, adding population and employment to those areas.
So I guess from a practical standpoint, I don't know if this comes to the Board for a final recommendation, but is for a final recommendation, but is the, is this work group session or this work session group comfortable with, you know, staff has heard the comments about some of the verbiage, about bringing that back to the full board, and, and then we can have a further discussion about, you know, which one of those feels the best to the overall board? Okay?
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I'll lay out sort of what, I mean, this is a check-in before we ultimately produce materials for public review and comment, and we just, again, you guys spent so much time talking about this, it felt like we had to come and check with you to borrow Elise's term. We'll noodle a little bit as well as to what feels like maybe the term that feels like the best version of a term that we can use. That seemed to be where most of the conversation was, and that's what we will put in the public review and comment materials. But the board still has a few bites at that apple, so we can obviously revisit this and it'll give time, folks more time to, to think about it.
Everybody comfortable with that? Director Brockett.
Just one further thought on the change in the numbers. I just, I would highlight the fact that your percent increase is actually going up a little bit, right? Because the, you changed the numbers dramatically down based on real-world data, but the percentage increase, you've actually gone up a little bit.
Right.
So I would definitely emphasize that.
Thank you for that.
Yep, good point. Okay, and Mr. Calvert has one other slide to go over?
Yeah, I didn't want this to be, to be lost since you're, again, you're going to be asked to take action on a lot of things in a few months, and you've kind of seen them in drips and drabs, so I just wanted this one lad, tie a bow around this, at least on the Metrovision side of things. Like I mentioned in the, one of the earlier slides, there are kind of two types of amendments that the board considers. Staff-initiated, which is what I would consider what we just talked about, and then member-initiated amendments. And on the Metrovision side, that can be anything. That can be a word in the plan, that can be a new outcome, that could be anything. Though traditionally, the thing that we most often see our member governments submit for amendments are urban centers that are recognized in the Metrovision plan. And so the board, several years ago, previously established sort of the process that, that new and revised urban centers used to ultimately make a recommendation to the board. And so you were going to see that a little bit later, but I just wanted to alert you to that. That's something that will be included in the public review materials. We had four urban center amendments that were suggested by our members this time around, three that were pretty significant expansions of existing urban centers, and then one proposed new urban center. So when the public review materials go out, in case you are wanting to familiarize yourself with that, you're going to see a recommendation of an independent evaluation panel that comes together to review these, as well as a preliminary staff recommendation. So I just, while we're in the arena of talking about plan amendments, I didn't want you to think that what we, what we just talked about was the only amendments that the board would consider related to, to the Metrovision plan. So as I mentioned, to kind of one final sort of closeout, we're going to start a public review period, probably in the next 10 days or so. The board will consider all of these amendments in April, but just, you're going to see things like the RTP project amendments that the board took action on from a modeling, modeling perspective back in December. You're going to see an action related to these urban centers, as well as the performance measure that I mentioned previously. And you're also going to see some other various sort of more minor staff-initiated changes on the regional transportation plan that are about clarity, updated data, that sort of thing. So I just wanted to give you the full perspective of what you're going to be considering for action. So you'll hear about that not only at the public hearing in March, but you also hear that obviously when you take action in April.
So before we move on, I just want to make sure anybody on the phone that wants to weigh in has the opportunity. We will move on to Attachment C. Thank you very much, Mr. Calvert. Attachment C is discussion on TIP subregional share forum. And Mr. X.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Whoop. Is that somebody? Okay. Oh, okay. All righty. No, so our, our topic for discussion today is the formation of our subregional forums. You know, the, you know, the TIP policy work group and staff, we've now initiated some discussion related to the subregional forums and the, the kind of the governance side and the formation of. So we wanted to just throw at you guys this evening some of the, you know, some foundational governance concepts that, you know, to get your reaction to and, and further discussion, of course. So just, just so everybody understands where we are today, we have gone, we have come a long ways, although I know it probably doesn't seem like it all the time. We have indeed, you know, reached some consensus and actually through board action, you know, have, have decided on several components of this new, new regional subregional model for inclusion in the 2020 to 2023 transportation improvement program policy documents. So first and foremost, we, we agreed on the set-asides. They're on the, the red box on your far left. That was decided back in, oh, I believe that was like September timeframe. And of course, at the last meeting, we had, we, we had quite a bit, quite a discussion, and we decided on the regional subregional split, which is 20% to the, to the region and 80% to the subregion. And those are reflected here. Now, again, I feel, I always have to point this out as the, the biggest of disclaimers, that the, the monies that we're talking about here are strictly, it's an estimate. I think it's a little better than a guesstimate. It's a, we think we're in the ballpark. We should know more about this number within the next, next several weeks. We're, we're in conversations with CDOT right now, so we believe we'll have a better idea, hopefully even for, for the March board meetings, just to give you guys some, some ideas of where we are with that. But we do believe we're in the ballpark. And also, so, so the regional subregional split, we did that. We also decided and acted upon the, the regional share eligibility framework. And part of that framework was we outlined the types of projects and programs that are eligible for the regional share. We also agreed to how many, that, that who's eligible to submit projects for the regional share, and that is the subregions, CDOT and RTD. Each are entitled to submit up to three applications. And one of CDOT's has to be a reaffirmation of the central 70, 25 million that was committed during the, I guess, the current TIP cycle. And last but not least, the request for the regional share funds cannot exceed 50% of the project cost and is capped at a $20 million max. So, so those are really what we decided on. I mean, those are big, big heady issues, of course, and it really helps us, we feel we're on a downward slope now. We feel we get, we, we, we're optimistic that, that at least we can, you know, start to develop a timeline where we can see the end. So, so let's see where we go with that. So the discussion we wanted to have today is about the subregional forums. And I know there's been, you know, there's been some informal meetings within the counties that talk about the subregional forums, I believe. Almost every, every county has had at least some informal discussions, primarily at the staff level, but I, I'm not sure if they're, yes, sir?
Director Holton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had our second informal sub, sub-region meeting or forum, and we are already in the process of sending around our MOU to the various entities that'll be eligible for, for their inputs. And we're looking, I think we're, we've got off to a great start, and I think it's a, it's a great mechanism by which we can negotiate with all our entities to find what's best for the, for the total subregion. So I think it's going to be successful.
Great, thank you, sir, very much. No, that's, that's good feedback. Appreciate that. Now, there's, there's eight subregional forums that are proposed, and there's two, two of these forums are not like the others. And those two are the city-county of Denver and the city-county of Broomfield. Those two counties and two subregional forums, they're sitting right next to each other today, so they can.
You just subreed each.
Yeah. Those are a little different. So a lot of the, what we're going to talk about here this evening don't really apply to those two subregions because they don't have multiple entities within. Those, they're going, we're going to be working with their staffs and as well as, as our board directors in developing a process. And quite frankly, they're going to probably face a lot more scrutiny than any of the others, to be honest with you. So we, so we're going to start that here real soon. I know we got some county, we got some Denver staff in back that we're going to reach out to real quick and, and get going. And I know there's been some, some discussion, at least in Denver. I'm sure Broomfield's had at least some, some informal discussions about it. Indeed, indeed. So we broke this out for you today in five different areas. There's membership, forum, formation of, of the subregions, who's eligible to submit projects as part of the subregional forum, meeting postings and notifications, and subregional documentation. So we'll just go through one by one and just get your general reaction to these. Here we go. So the subregional forum membership. The one thing I would like everybody to understand, that in, in our discussions and in our, you know, in our proposal, what we're suggesting here, that the subregional forums, their governance is really, is an extension of Dr. Cog's governance, right? So the, first and foremost, for each subregional forum, every, all Dr. Cog member governments will be invited to participate, right? So every local government within each subregional forum will be invited to participate. Now, if there's a, if there's a local community that, that is, you know, it's in multi-jur, multi-counties, you know, for example Westminster's and Jefferson, Adams, just Jefferson, Adams, sorry. Jefferson and what?
Aurora is as well.
Aurora's at three. So they will be invited to participate in three of those subregional forums. Now, there could be a situation in which, I'll just use, just as an example, Aurora, maybe there's a, in Doug, the portion that they have in Douglas County, they're not envisioning anything down there, or, you know, they just wish to just concentrate on, you know, one, on the Adams County forum or something, right? So, so they may decide not.
Excuse me one minute. Director Partridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Doug, to interrupt, but just a question. So when it comes to be considered a member, is it done by footprint? Is it done by a population? Is it done by both? I ask that because Inglewood does have a small parcel in Douglas County, but as I understand, no population base. So how will that be handled?
That's a very good question. So we're, we're using the actual corporate city limits as, as, as that boundary. Like there's, there's communities that own property in other, other counties, for example. They, at least based on what we believe, they would not be invited to participate in that subregional forum. Like for, like for example, well, give me one. Like what Denver's got.
Red Rocks.
Right. Red Rocks, for example, or, you know, down in My Neck of the Woods, down in Castle Pines, you guys got property down in Daniels Park, right? They, because they own property does not provide that invitation. Their corporate limits would indicate that. Does that make sense to everybody?
Director Flynn.
I think, Roger, your, your question was the opposite of that. You do have corporate limits of Inglewood in the county, but not population. Is that? So how, how would that be?
Right. So they, and what do you mean by corporate limits? Because.
They're basically, they're city boundaries.
Part of the city, and part of the city of Inglewood is in Douglas County?
Right, right.
Okay. So how would that be?
As, for example, your park in Douglas County, you have jurisdiction over that. Yep. Because we had a fire there, and guess who we called? Yeah, so, you know, in that situation, so how, how, how is that? Because it's incorporated or you own property there, your jurisdiction. Maybe that needs, still, still needs a little bit of work and discussion.
Yeah, probably so. And that, that's something we can definitely take back to our, to our TIP policy work group.
Director Jones.
And just one clarification about what it means to be a Dr. Cog member?
Yes.
We, only if they are a member, not if they could be, but aren't?
Correct.
Like Jamestown in Boulder County isn't a member. They could be if they wanted, they don't want to be, so they're not a part of this.
That's correct. Yes. That's, that's, now, this is at a minimum, right? This, this, Dr. Cog members shall be invited to participate, right? As a minimum, because it's an extension of Dr. Cog's governance, right? Get that. So within each subregional forum, which of those Dr. Cog members, you know, you don't have to participate, it's just, you know, you can decide that you can, you want to opt out. That's up to you. But each, each entity who does decide to participate designates an elected official or they're designee to, to be as a representative. So if, if you all decide that you don't want an elected official serving on this committee, then you're more than welcome to, to designate a staff person to, to participate on that forum. That's, that's full discretion of each community. Each forum member entity will each have a vote. Now, this last section, the last part of this, about the voting and decision-making structure, what that basically means is that, you know, with regards to, you know, actionable items, what you all decide to do, is it just like a simple majority? Is, you know, majority of those present? Is it 75% of, of membership? You know, those types of decisions will be left up to the subregional forum if you agree that, with, with that whole concept. So that gives you some flexibility in that respect. The other is RTD and CDOT shall both be invited as non-voting members. Again, you may decide that you want them to be voting members, but at a minimum, we would request that both of those public entities be included as non-voting. Or you, I also said you may not. I'm mocking you. And last but not least is you're, you're more than welcome in each subregional forum to, to invite other, other regional stakeholders, right? Or the, I guess, subregional stakeholders. It's really, again, at the discretion of the subregion. So it could include, you know, you know, it could be transportation management associations or universities, could be chambers, could be members, as Director Jones suggested, you know, members that are, are communities that are not Dr. Cog members that are within the county. You are more than welcome to do that, but that will be, you know, some kind of consensus decision of the, of the subregion. That is it on membership. I think what might be best, Mr. Chairman, just take these one by one.
Sure.
If.
Questions or comments on this particular item? Director Walton.
If I understand correctly, you can pool money together between the eight. Is that correct? So if you have a project, do you need to officially invite the, the other one of the eight?
That's a great, that's a great question. Yeah, not, not only can you, but I would say that it's encouraged. You know, that's part of the discussion that we had at a previous, a couple of different board work sessions in that. And I think there's, there's a lot of agreement to that, that the priority should be those types of projects, you know, that, that reaches across these interjur, inter-subregional groups, right? But as far as the actual, you know, just the logistics of that, I mean, that's a good question. I, I don't know if I've really given that much thought of what that looks like, but it would, it seems to make sense that, you know, if there's a project that you believe, if some regions, one subregion believes there's a project that they, they can work with another subregion, that they would probably invite that leadership, you know, to a meeting and have a, some kind of joint meeting or something like that. But we can give that also some more thought in the TIP policy work group.
And I guess I would suggest that since the subregions are going to choose the projects that they're going to submit to the full board for consideration, being able to prove that it is a project that really benefits multiple jurisdictions and that you have buy-in from all of those affected jurisdictions, I would suggest is going to strengthen your argument for getting awarded TIP money for that particular project. So, yeah, I think, you know, whatever, whatever you can do, whatever you can do to encourage that, that, that participation through, through the process is probably going to strengthen your case when you come to the full board.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's fabulous. That, that leads me to something I just thought about. You know, it's not just about the regional pot too, right? I would suggest that if there's opportunities within your subregional pots for subregions to work together, and when you present that information back to the full board, I would have, would suggest that that would be, you know, well-received. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's a pretty, that's a good, a good idea.
Other questions or comments on this item? Director Dozal.
I think I need a little more clarity on what happens after the subregions have collectively agreed to their projects that add up to the amount that's been allocated. Like, for example, Boulder County, $18 million, 18.4, or whatever it was. So we've gone together, we worked it out, and we've created projects that meet the goals of our communities, as well as the Dr. Cog TIP process. And we've reached that agreement, and then we're forwarding on to, and during that time, staff from Dr. Cog have been there. So there, we're not doing something that is outside of what the federal government would actually allow us to spend money on. So everything's per rules and per policies and. So everything's per rules and per policies and per objectives and all those kind of things. They're all perfect. And so then we get, and we forward them on to Dr. Cog. Then there's been a couple of comments lately about, well, the board here then decides whether or not those get funded. I know it's a final approval, but isn't it really more of a review and approval, not a determination whether or not they should be approved? And, and are we really talking about changing, possibly changing those projects after we, as a subregion, have already determined that they are what we need for our area, our communities?
Right.
I just want to make sure that we are not leaving a wrong impression here. My impression is, when we decide as a group, and we've had all the people there that need to tell us that we're doing it right, the projects are appropriate, and the feds aren't going to come back and slap us and not give us some money, that we then are really bringing them on for a final review and approval, but not to start over and possibly change our pool or our listing of projects.
Right, right. No, I, I think that's a very good question. You know, I, I do believe that, well, first and foremost, as part of this whole process, and it's, you know, it's stated pretty clearly, there's not many things stated real clearly in the Federal Highway Letter, but this one is, that the Dr. Cog Board has ultimate authority for the approval of the projects, the packages, right? So I would suggest to you, and you are correct, that Dr. Cog staff, we will be at every meeting to make sure that, you know, what you're talking about is in compliance with federal law and all those kind of good things, right? So there's nothing that will come forward that will be out of compliance with federal law, so you won't have to worry about that. Now, what I will suggest is that, and, you know, I think this is, you know, one of the, kind of, one of the cool things about this process is that the subregional forum, the chairperson, or the appointed person, whoever decides, will have to come back to the Dr. Cog Board, and they will present this package, right? Then will have to explain to the full board exactly why these projects were chosen, how it complies with the focus areas, how it complies with the tenants of Metrovision. You know, those types of things. And I, I would suggest, I don't think there's going to be a situation in which they say, heck no, that whole package is garbage, right? Go back and do something else. But I, but there could be questions associated with, did you think about this? You know what I mean? Those, those types of things. I, I think it's very unique to us. I will say, we had a conversation with, with staff from Puget Sound Regional Council, who accounted mirroring this, this process on, and they, they were intrigued by that element. They don't do that at their cog. Basically, staff, me, and my counterpart, just reports out on the packages from each community. I do, I think it's an interesting element that we're, we're planning on implementing, you know what I mean? That, that, you know, kind of just ties it all back together.
I think that's a very important step in the process, that each group, the eight, come back and say, this is why and how, and because we can learn from that for the next go-around.
Correct.
But I just don't want to leave the impression that we're going to actually come to this board and start moving money around.
No.
Or taking projects away. But it really should be where we can come, a Boulder County subregion should be able to come and very clearly describe and define how we chose the projects and how it's going to improve our area.
Yes.
I love that portion of it, but I just don't want to leave the impression that somebody's going to be able to come in and take a project out.
Sure, I think that's well said.
Okay, I got Director Jones, then Director Holton.
I, I understand Rita, that, what you're trying to convey about having, hoping that the Dr. Cog Board respects the work of the subregions, and I think that's a foregone conclusion, and it, it's worth having that expectation. But my read of the Federal Highway Letter couldn't be clearer. The Dr. Cog Board has to retain authority for it to be legal, and also, we're the final arbiters of whether or not the compilation of all of the subregions' work actually benefits the region. And I, we should not lose sight of the Dr. Cog's role and responsibility of looking out for the full region. We're, we're embarking on this huge experiment, that if we get, we all go parochial and think what, what's best for our piece of the region will add up to be best for the region, we have no idea. And we get, we need to make sure that at the end of the day, that it adds up to what's best. And I, I think we should certainly respect the subregions for sure, but we don't want to lose sight of our responsibility, so.
That's well said.
Director Holton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my first observation of, of the subregion, region purpose and/or mission, the issue of local control comes up, and I think that's an element that, that we all, as commissioners, as city council members, et cetera. It's something that this option, and I, I think it's important that, that when the board makes their, their final cut or decision on, on these various projects, it's important that we have a uniformed criteria checklist by which, when we're putting together our plans, that we, that we, we have a compliant document that we can present that, that won't be picked apart by, by, by the individual representatives on the board. We've had those problems in the past, and I think that this affords us an opportunity to, to at least reflect what the local concerns are, and mesh those with, with the commitment of multi-source funding, and a, an understanding of the importance of, of fitting into the regional 2040 plan.
So I wanted to weigh in real quick on this, because one of the things that I envisioned, and this might be a strategic thing, that each subregion decides how they're going to handle this on their own, of course, but one thing that I envisioned is that a subregion, and, and again, just choose Arapahoe County as an example, they have more good projects that they really want to submit than money available. And it might be a strategic, it might be strategic of them to say, we're going to, we think that these two projects both have very good merit, or these four projects both have very good merit, but they equal more than the money available, so we're going to present the best case for all four of them, and that's where the board weighs in on which three get funded or which two get funded. So Director Duzal, that's, that's what I envisioned with, not that, not that the board would take the authority away from the subregion and the work that they put into it, but that there might be choices that the board makes, that the subregion comes forward with more, you know, more than what's available. Director Walton, and then Director Duzal.
That was my impression as well, that we, as a subregion, may come with three projects, all that spend, each of those three spends all of the money, just as an example. But it also, to the question I asked earlier about pooling money across subregions. There's no points that would be given if it's just going to be a stamp of approval at the board level, if everybody just came with the three projects, or one, two, or three that, I'm trying to play that out, and, and so I guess I was making that same assumption.
Right. Well, let me ask this, if I may. Are we talking about submitting for the regional pot or the subregional pot?
Subregion.
Subregional pot? Well, well, yeah, I mean, the board will not be scoring your subregional projects. The recommendations that come out of the subregion, you will do that individual scoring yourself. You will do that evaluation and make a determination on which projects you want to bring forth to the Dr. Cog Board, right? So, you know, so at that point, that decision has been made. So the question is that, you know, when it comes to the Dr. Cog Board for vetting, it is, you know, is really what Director Jones had said with regards to what, what the purpose and the function of the Dr. Cog Board is in, in making the final determination.
So just real quick, I know I got Director Duzal and Director Jones, but I just want to, so what you just said, Doug, is, is a little bit different than what I had in my mind, and I'm, just want to make sure that we're very clear, because what I anticipated is that, again, using Arapahoe County as the example, Arapahoe County has three projects that, one of them benefits Arapahoe County Centennial and Aurora, one of them benefits Arapahoe County and two other communities. And they, when they grade them, they all grade very well. They're all projects that Arapahoe County wants to move forward, but they equal more money than what's in that subregional pot. Would not the board take action then in choosing which, okay, so it's up to the subregion?
Correct.
To, okay, well then, that's, that's my misunderstanding.
So just so everybody understands, so at the subregional level, right? When you get your, your suballocation of funding, you will do an evaluation project, lack of another term, you would do a call for projects within your subregion, right? So every community within your, your subregion will be able to submit. Okay? So, and then 18.4 was mentioned, so in Boulder County, right? So that's the money that would be available. You would rank and score those projects. We get into how do that at, at a later time. We're still working on the regional criteria, which we believe the least components of that will be used for the subregional call. But you will rank order those projects and make a determination of which those projects fits under the 18.4 that you're bringing forward to the Dr. Cog Board.
So I've got Director Duzal, Jones, Atchison, Director Duzal.
Yes, so that was my understanding, what you just said, Doug. What I was hearing the Chair say could also work if the, if the subregion couldn't make that decision and wanted to actually bring the three projects and say how they may intersect with other counties and other projects that are going on, and then ask the Dr. Cog Board to help make the determination based on the total region objective, like what, at least you were talking about. So that could happen, but I don't expect that to happen in Boulder County. So we'll know how we want to spend our money. But if, if, you know, it could happen, the way Bobby, you were talking about, that if you had three projects and you couldn't come to a determination, and you came and asked, let's look at them as how they interact and intersect with other projects, and how, how to score them more like a regional project rather than a subregional.
Yeah, very good.
Okay. And then the other.
That's the expression, at the subregion.
Yeah, and so, but I would think that most subregions, and I'm almost positive, Boulder County, will be able to figure out how to spend our money. And we'll have lots of projects, and we'll, we have some latitude, I believe, in how we determine what our projects, how we score or negotiate and cuss and discuss amongst us about how, that which project actually gets moved up forward to the Dr. Cog Board.
Excellent.
Okay, all right. Because we don't have to use your scoring necessarily for the regional projects, but we should look at the objectives and make sure we not necessarily score them the same way, but we're looking at the objectives.
Yes.
We may be talking the same thing, but I see it differently. Scoring is actually filling out a chart.
Right.
But basing your decisions on a set of objectives is not necessarily scoring, it's actually looking at each objective and, and how it works.
Yeah.
And then my last comment was, I can't remember what it was. Thank you.
Can I just comment on that last one about the scoring? And I think you're exactly right. I mean, you have, once we show you the regional criteria and we're working like, like dogs to get that done, we're, we're hoping at the, in next month's work session, we're gonna, we're gonna do that. We have, we have a meeting next week to talk about it some more. So we're real close on it, but.
That, that was what I was going to say about the regional. We each will submit three projects, which is kind of like overkill from my perspective. We're going to have 24 projects, and we have $20 million or something.
Right, right.
To spend, so it's going to be.
Sure.
And then the Dr. Cog Board will take up those 20 or 20-plus projects and determine of those projects, which ones can be and should be.
Correct.
Used in that regional project.
But what I wanted to mention with your scoring or evaluation of projects at the subregional level, you are right. You, we, at least personally, I believe, you know, we haven't really talked about this a lot at the, at the, at the tip policy work group level yet, but you're, you're welcome to use the regional criteria as proposed, or at the very least, you will have to use the core components of that, right? Which is the three focus areas, Metrovision, regional transportation plan, you know what I mean? Those, those elements.
So quick, quick check in, I've got Jones, Atchison, Flynn, Brockett, Stolzman, Director Jones.
I guess this conversation is, the more we have it, the more I get nervous, because it feels like we send everybody off and, and you get to spend the money however you want, and oh yeah, we got a few regional criteria, you should check that box. The Federal Highway Letter was pretty clear that there has to be regional criteria, and that any other local criteria could be added, and they would be considered secondary. And I don't know that we have made any decisions about how projects are going to be scored. So it seems to me that we need to, we, as a board, need to look at, do we want some consistent criteria and scoring methodology that all subregions use, and then they add the local, the local perspective for their particular region on top of that? Because otherwise, we have, I think, a quality control, or at least an inconsistency issue across subregions. And I remember the last TIP cycle, I think it was Jackie Malley that said, and we all went along with it, because it made sense. If your project didn't score above a 50, it shouldn't be funded because it wasn't a good project. And so not only were you dealing with a finite amount of money, we were only going to score good quality projects. We should still adhere to some level of high-quality standard, and it should be consistent across subregions. So I don't think we should be making promises or setting expectations. We haven't decided that yet.
True.
And I guess I want to raise some, some concerns that we don't want to suggest that everybody gets to go off and figure it out, however they want to spend their money. I mean, talk about spreading the peanut butter and not necessarily getting something that moves the needle on fundamental issues like regional traffic.
Right.
So I just want to raise that red flag.
No, I mean, I appreciate that, and I, I hope that's not what you thought I said, because it's not. I mean, I, I do believe that there will be, I mean, you will have, like, you know, there will be measurements. Now, the metrics you use, I mean, we can have that discussion, and you all can ultimately decide if the same metrics that are used in scoring the regional projects are used in the subregional stuff. I mean, that, that's a discussion we'll have next work session, to be honest with you. But I think the, the intent, and this is exactly the way Seattle does it, is that there are two, Todd, that, that use the, the regional evaluation scoring exactly alike, and some, they tweak that, but they still share the same core elements of it. So in our case, it'd be safety, reliability, vulnerable communities, right? Our focus areas, as well as the tenants of Metrovision will all have to be included in that scoring as well. So I know, I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm just flirting at the edges here now. I know you're not getting the full picture on this, and, but you, you'll get it next month.
Director Atchison.
One of the things that, as I'm sitting here listening to some of the conversations, in the subregional pot, you have a pot. You have a bank account. You don't get to spend more than your bank account. So contrary to some of the conversations going in, well, I've got three projects, and they're all great projects, but I don't have enough money. Subregion, go back and figure it out. You don't get three projects if you can't afford three projects. So I think that's going to be part of the dichotomy you're going to have to figure out in the subregional areas. If we come to a loggerhead and we can't come to an agreement, don't necessarily come to the board trying to resolve what you have to resolve at the subregional area. I think that's part of what Rita was talking about, is we've got to work it out at the regional and subregional areas separately. Subregion, it's all the cities and the county coming together, making a decision. These are what the representative of that subregion will come back as the region and say, okay, in our region, here are the projects that we're proposing. Whoever that spokesperson is, needs to sell those projects to the board as a whole. But any dispute among the group should have been resolved before it gets back here.
Director Flynn.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Jones has articulated my concern probably better than I was formulating it in my head, but let me just take it a little farther, further, that what I'm hearing is that each subregion within a certain very high-level framework is going to develop its own basic govern, governing process for vetting projects. It could be that adjoining, adjoining subregions, which may have, because transportation corridors don't really respect where the politicians drew their boundaries, right?
Correct.
They may have different processes for, even under this framework, for determining projects. So I, I find myself kind of wishing that a lot of this had been worked out before, so that when we made the decision to do 80/20, we understood how it was going to be, you know, how that was going to go. But the last thing I want is for each subregion to come here and just expect us to rubber stamp what they did at the subregional level. I want a clear understanding of how it fits into the regional, the regional plan, Metrovision and everything else.
Sure.
So how, how do you envision? So how, how do you envision adjoining subregions? Let me just pick on Jefferson County, because it's so big, that the needs in the north part of the county where they adjoin Boulder, Broomfield, and Adams might be wildly different from where they adjoin my district in southwest Denver, and Arapahoe County, and Englewood, and Sheridan. And how do you envision that working if they have different processes for allocating?
Different processes for allocating? With regards to the evaluation of projects?
When they work together, when two subregions work together.
Oh, sure. Well, I mean, you know, I think jointly, those two subregions are gonna have to make a determination on how they're gonna do that. If there's a project that they feel there's a priority, that they need to work across those subregional lines, then, I mean, I would suggest that they would find a way to do that. I mean, I think if it becomes clear amongst, then there's consensus amongst the two subregions, that there's a project that ranks high enough that it should be considered, they might, you know, fund it both, you know, half and half, or something like that, or, you know, 70/30 based on where the project limits are, right? But, but that type of discussion is one of the reasons why we decided to have this type of flexibility in the subregional model, the ability to do that. Because if you remember the old model, right, was that it was, it was parochial, right? I mean, each community just submitted their own project with or without any conversation with anybody else. At the, at the minimum, this creates a collaborative environment at the county level, but we, as a group, I say "we," I include me and you guys, that we, we've had a discussion about, you know, setting as priority and an emphasis on projects that work across those subregions. You know, and Director Flynn, I'm, I agree with you. I mean, you know, we've been pretty clear throughout this process. I mean, we're doing this, you know, we're learning as we go. This is all new to us too, right? And, and we know there was gonna be, you know, there's gonna be some warts along the way. And, you know, we're trying to figure it out as we go. But you're right, I mean, there's a lot of tremendous questions about how this will work. And, you know, that's why we have Puget Sound to help us with some of those, some of those issues. But, you know, and, you know, even the conversations we have with their staff, they readily recognize that even now, and they've been doing this 20-plus years, that, you know, they still come across situations in which, you know, it's just, it just matures as they go forth, right? So, we're gonna, I mean, I think the general concept makes sense, then we'll, we'll work out, you know, some of the details as we go forth. But I, I think we just caution everybody, you know, about what this is. It's a pilot.
So, in the-
Thank you, I think.
In the queue, I have Brockett, Stolzmann, Beacom, Henry. Director Brockett.
Thank you. Actually, I was gonna address just that issue about subregional collaboration, because, you know, as we're talking about, we want to encourage that. So then I would encourage us, as we set up the structure for the subregional forums, to maybe think about how we could formalize how cross-subregional collaboration could work. So, for example, in Boulder County, I think, like, State Highway 7 is a big opportunity. And we, it should be more than just me saying, "Hey, let me give Eva a call and see if she wants to work on State Highway 7 together."
Right, right.
It should be more of a, "Hey, your subregion, your chair could call their chair and request," you know, just something, something that gives us a little bit more of a structure for how to do that collaboration, so as to encourage it and give a clear path.
That's a great idea. I might just throw, I thought of something when you said that. In our last meeting with Puget Sound, one of the things that they do is their PSRC staff, they convene the chairpersons of each subregion. Monthly they do it, but they do it throughout the entire year. I mean, we might, there might be a situation in which we would do that, that would provide that mechanism for those, those chairs to get together.
Potentially. I'm not necessarily saying create another monthly meeting, but, but something, yeah.
Right, right.
Director Stolzmann.
Thank you very much. I don't need any of my questions answered tonight, and I look forward to seeing how a lot of this plays out, but I've brought a few things up a few times, and I still am not clear how things will be handled. And a lot of it's carryover, just from the way we used to do things, and maybe we're just throwing that all out and doing it totally different. But I still don't fully understand how penalties for delayed projects is going to work with the new funding process. It seems like people who have had second-year delays are sort of getting away with it. And we've had to, you know, nobody meant to have delays, but we spent a significant amount of time talking about how we were taking delays so seriously, and we were going to fund them, but there would be penalties, and you wouldn't be allowed to submit as many projects. And we, I literally have spent a significant chunk of my life listening to that, and then it's not clear to me how that is being carried forward into this new process with funding. So it, it seems like something that needs to be addressed, and if we do want to just wipe the slate clean, we should just admit that and make that a clear policy. Or if we don't want to, we need to come up with some kind of plan on how, within this subregional, because basically, people, it would need to happen at the subregional level.
Sure.
And so then, do you penalize the whole subregion because of one entity that had delays or not?
Right.
And I don't know how to answer that question. So I, I still have questions about that. And then, we talked a lot during the Metrovision process about having measures for success, so that, you know, in the past, we have projects and we score them, and then they get the funding, and they do the project, and then we assume that they did what we thought they would do. And everyone kept agreeing and buying in during that Metrovision process that we were going to have measures of success, where after a project was done, we would have some kind of reporting at minimum, where people would show a demonstrated successful outcome or not, so that you could show the board. We said we would reduce congestion by 10 minutes. We did our project, and we reduced congestion by 10 minutes or not.
Right.
So I still haven't seen how that would happen. And the last thing that's not obvious to me still is how different types of funding will be allocated. So, I don't think we'll end up with this problem, but it just seems like there could be a scenario, a perfect storm, sort of, where everyone submits the same type of project for their areas, and then we have an excess of one funding type and not enough of the other funding types to go to the subregions. And so I'd like to understand how that would be dealt with, so. And maybe that will never happen, and we don't need to plan for it, but-
Bill?
It seems like that could happen.
Right.
So I would, I'd like to understand that better.
Absolutely. Great questions. The first, on the delay policy, I'm gonna give you the same answer as I, unfortunately, I always seem to give you on this. But I will suggest to you that the entire subregion will not be penalized, whatever that process, at least from staff's recommendation and what we present to TIP policy work group, I would suggest. And we've had some internal discussions about it, but I'll be honest, that part of the TIP policy document, we're just not to it yet. But I would suggest, it could be a situation in which maybe a community that is, has had a prior delay, and as a result, has been penalized, maybe they had to pay a higher match on their, on their project if they were to get it funded at the subregion, or something like that. You know what I mean? It's just, it's just some things we've talked about. But, but we're aware of it. It's on the list of things that, that we will bring before you sooner or later. On the performance, I'm trying to remember what that one was.
Just measurable.
Yeah, and I don't need answers on all of these tonight, but they're just things that I hope we answer shortly, because they'll have it.
Oh, oh, yeah, kind of post-project.
Right. This is post-project, showing, demonstrating to the group how you were successful, and the last one was just allocating the different funding types.
Definitely so. We will definitely do that. That's part of our performance management strategy. It might even be required in the TIP now. I know for CMAC it is, right? I'm looking at Steve and Todd. Yeah, I think so. So, so yeah, so we will be doing that. Now, your other question with regard to funding, which is a very good one, so just so everybody knows, there's three pots of money that Dr. Cog has available for funding. There's SDP Metro, Surface Transportation Program, that is the most flexible pot we have. CMAC, Congestion Mitigation Air Quality, that money is really dedicated to projects that, as I suggest, help improve air quality. So it's primarily, you cannot use that money for capacity projects, roadway capacity projects, it can be used for bicycle capacity, of course, bicycle and transit pedestrian primarily are the elements of that. There are some intersection, like operational projects, you could, you could potentially do with that. And last but not least, is the transportation alternatives money. It's a very small pot, and that's dedicated strictly to pedestrian, bicycle pedestrian. So those are three pots. And the question is, is, well, let me say it this way. I think what we will propose, that you will know how much money you have in each pot, each subregion will know how much money they have in each pot, before you ever do your call or evaluation of projects. So you'll be able to match up that funding source with, with the project. You're right. I'm very nervous about how we used to do it in the past. We never used to, you know, we basically used to make the money work, right? When we used to get projects, and it thankfully always worked. But, and I, and I don't think it's gonna be that much of a problem this time either, simply because, you know, the vast majority of the set aside, the $50 million, that's in that, 49.4, are CMAC-eligible. And, like, the Central 70 monies, for example, that's CMAC-eligible too, because they're using that portion for managed lanes. So I think we're gonna be fine, but, but it's, it's not lost on us, Director Stolzmann, I just wanted you to make sure. But that's the direction we're headed. You will know the funding pots before, before you do your call.
Director Beacom.
I've listened to a lot of very, very good ideas and very, very sensible questions and that. Mine's much more simple, and it relates to the subregions working with each other. And there needs to be a process, and maybe a little more formal, so that you know that Broomfield and Boulder County would work together. How do we get a project that we can decide upon, that we want to do, that's gonna then come for final approval? Because it sounds to me like, right now, it'd be two separate proposals, one from us, one from Boulder, to go for that. How do you combine that if we're doing a cross-subregional project that you, that we've agreed upon?
Right. Well, great question. I think it'd be one of those situations in which, when you do present your package of projects, Broomfield and Boulder, that they indicate, right, that, you know, one of their projects is in, is in combination with or in cooperation with Broomfield, right? And it would be presented that way.
They're just trying to get, to be, so it's uniform.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, logistically, quite honestly, I don't know how that would work right now, but I wrote it down, and we'll, we'll talk about it at the policy work group.
Director Henry.
I appreciate all the great conversations we've had, and we've only gotten through our third. Is that the first one? Okay, just, just-
The others will go quick.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But I, I, those of you who are so concerned about the details, he has said several times that our next work session, we will have more details. Several, several times. Also, those of you who are concerned about how the subregions are gonna come up with their projects, or how they're gonna do everything in regards to that, I don't think you give us enough credit. We all are very talented people and dedicated people that are sitting here, and responsible people. And we all have great staff to be able to work together in regards to this. And as regards to subregions that are actually crossing one another, we've, we've done that in the last process. I remember, you know, and then it was just one county, or one region that took the lead on that project. I remember having one in Westminster, which was Jefferson County and Adams County, and Adams County took the lead on it. So I mean, but like, like he said, the details will come out in our work, next work study. Breathe, we're gonna make through this. I think it's gonna be great that we're gonna learn to work together in a subregion area. Broomfield, Denver, I envy you immensely, but, you know, I really think we can have great projects. And Highway 7, Boulder, goes through Boulder, goes through Broomfield, goes through Adams County, Brighton, Thornton, it's a great regional project. So, thank you, everybody.
Director Atchison.
I would ask, as you start to think about your, I'm gonna say the second and third Keep in mind, when they come here, staff members don't sit at the table. It's the elected officials, and it's the prime elected official from each group. So you gotta make sure that there's communication between those groups, because if you have one set of people going to one meeting, and a different set of people going to another one, the likelihood of a miscommunication elevates itself. If you are the elected official being here at the Dr. Cog board, I strongly urge you to be the one sitting in those subregional committees, because you're gonna be the one coming here talking, not your staff. And if you have alternates that don't come, you need to be here. But when it comes to the vote, it's the primary voters only.
Very good. Other questions or comments? There's people that haven't spoken.
There's more slides.
All right. All right, Mr. X, let's move on.
Okay, great. So, thank you very much. That was great conversation. I've got some notes here, so we'll touch base with the TIP policy work group on those items. So, subregional forum formation. So what we plan to do, and as I, as I noted earlier, I know that most of the counties have been meeting somewhat informally, just kind of get the legs underneath you and all that kind of good stuff. So we were, actually, the TIP policy work group, we had a discussion at the end of one meeting, that they felt that there needed to be some formal establishment, right, of these forums. And we felt like after, you know, that we got the funding split now, and the TIP frame, the regional framework and all that, we feel comfortable now with going, taking that next step. So what Dr. Cog's staff is proposing to do is to send out formal invitations to, to all the Dr. Cog members for those, for each subregional forum. It's suggested here that it's later this month. We'll see if we get to that. It really primarily depends on, I think, right now, we're at least planning on taking these foundational aspects, these items, to you at the, at the, your February 21st meeting for action. And if you feel comfortable at that time in taking action, then that will allow us then to send out those invitations and begin to have those discussions with the subregional forums. But if not, we can wait a month, there's, there's, you know, no major hurry to this. So, so yeah, that's planning what we're doing. So with regards to Dr. Cog's formal role with the subregions, as I suggested earlier, we will attend every meeting. We'll divide and conquer, and make sure that we have staff there for every one. Now, there may be some subregional groups where you feel that you want Dr. Cog to be more involved in actually staffing the subregions. We would be happy to do that as well. You know, there's some of the smaller subregions, for example, that, that, you know, that have already reached out, that might be interested in that type of endeavor. But you also, as you, as was suggested, you guys do have excellent staff within your county, so, but we want to provide that as an option, where we want to help you all to the degree you want us to help. So help us help you. So, so that's that component. I think that's everything on that slide. Is there any comments on that?
Questions or comments on that slide? Moving on.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Don't sell past the close.
Right. So, let's talk about entities who are eligible to submit projects. First and foremost, of course, Dr. Cog member entities are eligible to submit. Because of, this is a federal process, regardless of if you're Dr. Cog member or not, you are eligible within that subregion to submit projects. So, what was mentioned earlier, there was a community-
Jamestown.
Jamestown. Jamestown, for example.
Big side.
Yeah. God, County God knows them all. We, those would all be eligible to submit projects. So that you, when you do your solicitation, those, those communities will have to be contacted. And then the, the last bullet is other state, I mean, this is kind of a catch, catch, catchment for everybody else. Other state and regional agencies that are eligible to directly receive federal funds. And those have included in the past universities, your TMAs.
Do you feel?
What else? I mean, I mean, we can get you a list of those that have submitted, or at least been on our list before, but it does, you know, just, just others that are eligible within your, within your jurisdictions.
Questions or comments? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hear me. Karina, from Little-
Sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
I couldn't, I couldn't see it, and I'm like, ah!
Clarification on that third bullet of other state and regional agencies. Would RTD be in that bucket?
Yes, they would. Yeah, so RTD and CDOT would be included in that bucket.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Mr. X.
Okay. So, agenda postings and notifications. Again, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this is a, this is an extension of Dr. Cog's governance, so it is our hope that, that the postings for the subregional forum meetings would, at a minimum, follow Dr. Cog's procedures in that respect. in that respect. So, we were actually asking two things. So, first, I guess that you would follow Dr. Cog's posting requirements, meaning that we post it in the, you know, the binder in the reception area, as well as we will also include those. We'll create a new page for our subregions, and we will post those on our website. We would also request that you follow the posting procedure for the entity that will be hosting that subregion, subregional meeting. So, if it's held in Denver, yeah, well, Denver, that would make sense, you guys are going to do these subregional forum meetings. If it's held in Denver, that you have a procedure in place for your public meetings, that you would post that accordingly. And once you do that, you know, we would also then, you know, we would need to know what 40, well, basically, yeah. If we get it 48 hours in advance, we'll make sure we get it posted accordingly as well. And that, obviously, the meetings are open to the public, and they contain a public comment period. We, at Dr. Cog, we include a section in all of our meetings now that is a public comment period, is an item on our agendas. We would, you know, at least proposed by staff, we would encourage you to do that as well. And so, that's the subregional forum, that's the big committee within each subcommittee, subregion. Now, if the subregion also forms, you know, they formally establish some other committees, like a technical committee or what have you, we would ask that you follow that same procedure in doing so, because we, like, we also, like our Transportation Advisory Committee, and as well as our Tip Policy Work Group, we post all of those accordingly as open meetings and all that kind of good stuff. So, we would ask you to do that as well. And last but not least, as part of this posting and notification, local governments that are not part of your subregional forum, we would also ask that you include those in a mailing list, so they're aware of those meetings. It's kind of like what we do too. We have a, you know, for our Dr. Cog Board meetings, we have a list, which are you all, but we also have another list of interested parties, right, that you would include those local governments in that list. Any questions on that?
Nope. Moving on.
Great. So, last but not least, is the documentation process. And in the federal letter that is included in your packet, and I know you all seen it before, you know, one of the requirements with regards to that, before we ever get into the process of doing, you know, a solicitation for projects, an evaluation of projects, that each subcommittee, or, sorry, I'm sorry, each subregion very specifically indicate what the procedure they are going to follow for the evaluation of those projects. And we can even provide you some examples of that from Puget Sound and how they wrote it up. But also, as part of that, we'd have to have some acknowledgement that, you know, that you invited others to attend, you know, are there any kind of subregional forum formation governance, or, you know, IGAs, MOUs, whatever it is you established. I didn't mention this earlier, but, you know, we're not requiring that each subregion do an IGA, or an MOU, or some kind of governance thing, agreement, but everybody's more than welcome to. And I think most that I've talked to, they are proposing to do that. Some may be more informal than others, but that is, I mean, that is strictly up to the subregions to do that. If you feel more comfortable with that, then you're obviously more than welcome to do it. But we want copies of those. And any, like I said, any established procedures and the like, we also want to include that in our documentation, so that we can provide that information to federal highways. That is it for me.
Very good. Overall questions and comments on the presentation? Director Walton.
I just wanted to thank staff for the details on this, and I appreciate other board members' patience with those of us who are new and haven't even been through the process, so thank you very much.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for that. But I will, I mean, I've met with several of our board members, whether they be new or old, to have a discussion about this. If you would like to just have a one-on-one sit-down with me to go through all these elements, I know you've got questions that maybe you didn't even raise today, that I'd be happy to go through. And actually, it helps us too, in making sure that we're, you know, we're dotting all the i's and crossing the t's when we talk to the Tip Policy Work Group. So, be happy to do it.
Did you mean experienced board members or old board members? Seasoned, right, right. Seasoned board members. Director Jones.
I just had a question. In terms of the length of time you think that the subregions will be taking for this, and sort of the number of meetings, what's the sort of scope that you anticipate attaches itself to this process, so we can get psyched and prepared?
Wow. Well, let me say this. So, if we, if we, you know, if you give us, you know, approval to actually begin to form those subregions, and we do that, like, you know, so say the first meeting's in March timeframe, we're not anticipating a call for the regional, we're not anticipating doing a regional call till this summer. And then, the subregional calls will not occur then until the fall. So, we're really looking at a process of probably six months or so for the subregions, or more.
Okay. Other questions or comments? So, just a couple of things real quick. If you need a parking validation, please come up and get one. If you by chance did not sign in on the sign-in sheet, it's up here as well. And I wanted to mention one thing real quick. Our director of our AAA area agents and aging, Jayla Sanchez Warren, she invited me to an interview on No Copay Radio that we recorded last week, and we spent about 20 minutes talking about the AAA. If you didn't hear it, I don't blame you, it was at 4 o'clock on Saturday, it aired 4 o'clock on Saturday and 7:30 a.m. on Sunday. So, if you didn't hear it, I understand. But it was really interesting, and I just wanted to give Jayla a shout-out. She does a really good job of promoting the AAA, and for the people who might not know the importance of the AAA, it's over 50% of our employees work for in Jayla's shop, and just do wonderful work for the aging population in the region. And so, it was, it was really a lot of fun. And Murphy Houston is a great interviewer. He makes it, makes it fun and keeps it light, and so it was a lot of fun. So, thank you, Jayla.
Thank you for being a guest. And you can go on the website, nocopy.com, and hear the interview, and anyone else that we've interviewed before. And I think Mr. Atchison is going to come in the next couple of weeks and be on the...
We're negotiating.
We're negotiating right now.
Jayla, if I may, Steve Erickson, it's on our website, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. It's on both.
Yeah, okay. So, you can find that, the archive podcast on our website.
Yep, that's right. I forgot.
It was kind of interesting, because we were talking about when it would air, and it was pointed out, well, it had to air this weekend, because I'm not chair for much longer. They introduced me as the chair, and that doesn't exist very much longer, so. Anyway, anything else for the good of the cause? See nothing at 5:39. We're adjourned.